Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the March 11th Board of Trustees Meeting. Can we please stand for the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Camille, will you do the roll call?
Present.
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 Present, and before we get started, I'd like to give Chief Satriello an opportunity to come and address the board and the community. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor, Board of Trustees, Mr. Burke. Thank you for allowing me to go out of order. I have my own meeting to get back to. Mayor, on December 30th of 2023, the unthinkable occurred with a member of my department. He committed unspeakable acts within his home, and my department was thrown into a state of shock and surprise. We immediately contacted peer counseling, and while scheduling that peer counseling in the early morning hours of the 31st, I returned from the room where we were going to be conducting those counseling sessions, and your police chief was manning my police desk and had already arranged through Lieutenant Zerolnik to send cars down, knowing that my officers were not in any frame of mind to respond to calls or to make quick judgments on calls. The hours turned into days, and those days following that incident, the village of Tuckahoe, specifically the Tuckahoe Police Department, was a partner in our recovery. We still struggle in recovering from what occurred, but I'm here tonight to thank the village administrator, the mayor and trustees, and most importantly, your police department for their continuing support. We have a tremendous relationship. We share a radio frequency, which many people don't realize, that we're your backup and you're our backup. We needed you and your department on December 30th in a quick response and emotional support, physical support, and responding to calls. And that support was provided without being asked. So be sure that the village of Bronxville stands ready, mayor, Board of Trustees, village administrator, and police department, to return that level of support in the event you ever need help. So I'd like to publicly thank Chief Oda, Lieutenant Andrew Zerolnik, the entire board, and the village administrator for your support during that crisis.
You're very welcome, Chief. That's what community does. We're here for each other. And Chief, just, I did speak to the mayor, and I'll say to you also that we will continue to be here for you if you need anything. You just have to reach out, and I know that you're in touch with the chief. All right, now get back. I don't want Mary yelling at me, because you're not at your board meeting. We do have some appointments, so let's begin with the authorizing of the appointment of Christopher Bosley in the position of police officer per employment agreement. May I have a motion to authorize the appointment of Christopher Bosley?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And I'd like to ask Christopher Bosley and family to come forward to be sworn in. Christopher, if you would please hold your right hand up and repeat after me, "I, Christopher Bosley, do solemnly swear to uphold the Constitution of the United States," "the Constitution of the State of New York," "and the duties of police officer in the village of Tuckahoe," "to the best of my ability." Congratulations and welcome to Tuckahoe. I understand there's a pinning of the badge gonna happen? Yeah, the shield. Chief, I will let you have the first opportunity to congratulate your new police officer.
Good evening, Village Board.
And your first hire as chief. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Christopher. Just wanted to give a brief synopsis of Chris. Chris is 25 years old. He's been a police officer with the city of Mount Vernon for a year and a half. I met Chris years back in Westchester County in a unit where we were doing some technology work together. He left a lasting impression on me. At that point, a position for parking enforcement officer came up here, and we got Chris on board. Chris immediately grasped the culture of the police department in the village of how we treat our residents, how we treat the people here. He was a phenomenal parking officer with no complaints, which is a very tough position. Chris wanted to become a police officer so bad after his life dream and seeing the inner workings of Tuckahoe, he was offered the opportunity to be a police officer in the city of Mount Vernon. So it was a bittersweet goodbye when we sent him off on his way. Fast forward, a position opened up here, and Chris fits everything that we're looking for in a police officer for the village. He checked all the boxes, and we're looking forward to working with you, Chris. We see a lot of potential in you, and welcome aboard. I wish you a safe career. And again, I think Chris is a great addition to the RPD, and we look forward to seeing you on the streets. Congratulations, Chris, and that's all I have to say. It feels good, right? Okay.
Chris, if you'd like to address anyone, the village and the board, you may. I like it. Comes prepared.
Good evening. First off, I'd like to thank Mayor Andino, Chief Oda, the entire Tuckahoe Village Board, and all members of the Tuckahoe Police Department for this opportunity. I had the opportunity to work alongside the members of the Tuckahoe Police Department back in 2020 and 2021 as a parking enforcement officer, as the chief said, which allowed me to observe the firsthand professionalism and exemplary attitude that the members of this department showed day in and day out. Now, I am honored to now be such a part of a great police department, and I'm excited to protect and serve the members of this community of the village of Tuckahoe. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. So we do have two more appointments for the Department of DPW, Department of Public Works. So may I have a motion to authorize the appointment of Nico Vinchigera to the position of sanitation laborer?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Second.
Thank you, Camille. What would we do without you? May I have a motion authorizing the appointment of Joseph Marzella to the position of road maintenance foreman?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Congratulations to the new employees of the village of Tuckahoe. And we do have a few presentations. Yep. I'm gonna ask the deputy mayor to begin with a presentation to Megan Moore, who was named World Champion of the Ninja League. And I think the deputy mayor, when she reads her plaque, will give you a little more information. You wanna go forward now?
So if you, I'm gonna tell everybody a secret about myself. I would love to be a ninja.
Who wouldn't?
I would really love to be a ninja. And so I think this is one of the most amazing things, that we have a young woman in the village who has been a world champion of the World Ninja League and has a record holder. So first of all, can we just all give Megan Moore a wonderful round of applause?
And if Megan, if you and your family can come forward. And I'll say, Megan is very humble about this. If it were me, I'd be screaming it from the mountaintops that I'm a ninja warrior.
So Megan, on behalf of the village of Tuckahoe, on behalf of the village of Tuckahoe, this certificate is awarded to you, Megan Moore, for your achievement on winning the World Ninja League Champion, the most prestigious title of world champion in 2023, and the Guinness Book World Record holders held in Italy coming out on top, traveling 10 meters in a record 4.08 seconds. The Tuckahoe Village Board of Trustees commends you on your achievement and extends best wishes for your future success. So this is for you.
Congratulations, Megan.
And then we have something else for you. There is a store on Fisher Avenue called Teresa's Sweet Treats, and Julio and Teresa, the owners, wanted you to have this to say congratulations. Here's a gift certificate for you.
Got something sweet. Congratulations, Mom and Dad. So this is Women's History, Women and Girls' History Month. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. We do have a presentation. I'm gonna skip around a bit. I'm gonna let the Girl Scouts do their Women's History Month presentation. Nick Zanzano, would you be okay with that? Thank you. So can the Girl Scouts come forward to do their presentation? Hello, young ladies. Don't be shy. Hello? There's a mic right there. Speak into the mic and speak confidently.
Good evening, Village of Tuckahoe, Village Trustees, and Mayor Omira. We are the cadets of Girl Scout Troop 2642. We are here today to chair our presentation of Women's History Month. Thank you all for having us here today. My name is Samantha Anderson.
Viviana Solis.
My name is Alots.
Good evening, I'm Mackenzie Bernard.
And good evening, my name is Sheralots.
What is Women's History Month? Well, Women's History Month is communicating confidence through quotes and influential lessons.
I'm sorry. Are you looking for a presentation? Okay, okay. I see Dr. Kimberly is not having it.
Standing up for women's rights. And being first.
But most importantly, Women's History Month is a reminder of all the amazing things women have accomplished in this world.
I will start off with Phyllis Wheatley. A quote that she has is, "Wisdom is higher than a fool could reach." I chose Phyllis Wheatley because she is an independent, amazing black woman during the American Revolution. I will give you three facts about her. At the age of 14, she published her first poem in 1767. Although she was a patriot during the revolution, she was also an activist speaking out against slavery. Finally, she would write many letters to ministers and others about liberty and freedom. I will now pass it on to Samantha Anderson.
Juliet Gordon Low was known by her nickname Daisy. She was the woman who founded Girl Scouts USA in 1912. Her legacy lives on while she keeps on inspiring young Girl Scouts and young girls to be courageous, confident, and to be their best selves. Why I chose Juliet Gordon Low was because she is a great leader who provided a place for girls to be courageous and competent.
Nice.
I'm gonna pass it on to Alots.
Hello. So Clara Barton, at the age of 15, started off her career as a teacher. Due to the townsman not wanting a woman to work in a school, she had left. She had then served as aid and relief in a plethora of wars, and then there she had started the American Red Cross. The American Red Cross is an organization that thanks to the Geneva, sorry, the Geneva Convention, helps, sorry, provides relief and aid for victims of war and calamities such as famine, tornadoes, and floods. Her impact still lasts today as the American, sorry, as the American Red Cross is helping people daily. I think that Clara Barton is a great example of what women can really do when they have a goal and a plan to accomplish it. I am now handing off this presentation to Bebe.
Malala is known for being one of the youngest Nobel laureates. She is famous because she was such a young person standing up for women's rights. The reason why I chose Malala is because she is a courageous young woman who chose to stand up for her and other girls' rights at a very young age. One quote from her is, "One child, one teacher, one book, one pen can change the world." Now I will pass it on to Mackenzie.
I chose Simone Manuel because she is a female African-American swimmer, and as aspiring Olympic swimmer, I look up to her. So Simone Manuel is the first and only African-American woman to win an individual Olympic gold medal in swimming. She won the race in 100 free. She broke down barriers as an African-American woman, as only one of the African-American women on the Olympic USA team.
And last, but certainly not least, someone close to Girl Scout Troop 2642's heart. Our Mayor Omira, as we know, is the first person of color and Latina to take this position of mayor. Mayor Omira took office in 2021 during the COVID-19 pandemic and has made a huge impact in our community. Her motto is, "Do it even if you are afraid." Mayor Omira was born in Brooklyn, but her heart beats in the village of Tuckahoe.
Mayor Omira has been at the forefront of the village of Tuckahoe's inspiring Girl Scout troop since she was on the Board of Trustees. Thank you, Mayor Omira, for being our example for Women's History Month. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Very nice. Thank you for including me in that. So I would like to, before the young ladies leave, I'd like to dedicate this Women's History Month to Megan Moore, to Girl Scout Troop 2462, and also to the Girls' Varsity Cheerleading Team, who are New York State champions in Tuckahoe, as well as the Girls' Varsity Basketball Team, who won the New York State Regional Championship for the first time in school history. So girls in Tuckahoe are rocking it. Thank you, ladies. So Nick, we're on to you. We'll hear about some history from Nick Zanzano. And if anyone needs to go home because they have to get ready for school tomorrow, now might be a good time. Good night.
Okay, Nick Zanzano, Tuckahoe Village historian. What prompted tonight's program was our past historian, Ernie Zaki. His grandson found another crate of great photos and great history. So included in that was about 700 vintage newspapers from Tuckahoe. They're all dated from about 1818 to 1930.
Are we supposed to have a presentation up, Nick?
We're gonna do the presentation.
Okay. Just making sure.
Okay, let's start the program. If you remember, a few months back, I did Village Hall in Tuckahoe. This is the Duesenberry Building that was in the center of, it's the Duesenberry Building that was in the center of Depot Square today. If you look at this picture, this is the south corner of the building, and on the bottom floor with the awning is the Eastchester Citizen Bulletin. The Eastchester Citizen Bulletin started as just the bulletin, and it was in 1894. And this paper endured until 1926. And here's a copy of the Citizen Bulletin. I just took a little heading from each of the newspapers, but I've been going through these newspapers. I won't get through the whole 700 quickly, but very interesting. It's very cool to look at all the old advertisements, the different businesses that were in Tuckahoe. Just remarkable. And I'll have them here on Wednesdays, and when we build the new website for the history department, it's gonna include all the newspapers, so viewers will be able to see all the newspapers. And really, it's just fantastic. So this was the Citizens Bulletin. I think everybody recognizes this building. This is where Ferris Market is today, right up Main Street, at Main Street and Cameron. Back in 1922, it was a printing press, and eventually it becomes the Tuckahoe Record. The Tuckahoe Record was from 1925 to 1931. This was a five-cent weekly newspaper, and we have 230 copies of this in our archives now. Here we are on Lake Avenue. The building is 83 Lake Avenue. I couldn't find an old one with the Daily Record written on it, but the newspaper at this location only lasted three months. The Daily Record was in 1929, in just October, November, and December. And here's a copy of the Daily Record. Again, this was very nice of the Zaki family to donate the newspapers. They also donated a ton of work on the Tuckahoe trolleys, the trolleys from Yonkers to Tuckahoe and to Waverly Square. The next program next month, we're gonna jump and we're gonna show all five of the Tuckahoe post offices over time. So this was a short visit, but I hope you found it interesting.
That's a good visit, yes. Thank you so much, Nick. You'll be back next month, right? Yeah, we appreciate it. Thank you very much. So we'll move on to public hearings. The public hearing to consider, to consider proposed modifications to the code related to short-term rentals remains open. If there's anyone that would like to weigh in, give feedback, now is the time. The public hearing is open, so anyone in the room who would like to weigh in on the short-term rental proposed modifications, you may come up now. Hello.
Good evening. Thank you.
Your name, state your name and address.
My name is Valen Nikchi, and the address is 29 Armour Villa, Tuckahoe, New York. I also agree as a resident of Tuckahoe that it's critical to regulate the short-term rentals. I just have some questions or clarifications. I believe that short-term rentals should be banned from renters. So renters who rent an apartment or a house, they should not be able to sublease or do short-term rental. Also, in this case, the code enforcement officer, I just want to know, who will the code enforcement officer, or is the village hiring a new person? And last but not least, are we able, or is the village able to do type of workshop, either in Zoom webinar or in person, to educate the people about this new law?
Good points.
Thank you very much.
So we can, and Gary, maybe we can look at how we can incorporate that renters can or cannot be allowed? We can discuss that, or can you respond to that now?
Mayor, renters were allowed to do it, but there's a certain, they had to, renters for a certain period of time and have, you know, an interest in the property, basically.
Okay, so we can take a look at that, yeah. And as far as enforcement, that's the building department, Valon. And we could definitely talk about educating the community about this, because it's something that's new, so that's a good point. Something for us to consider. Thank you. Is there anyone else? Anyone in person? Yes, come forward. Good evening.
My name is Aslan Revisha. I live in 100 Old Boys, seven months. I moved from Bronx over here. And the thing is, I see something's missing over here. I'm gonna take my, okay, do respect for you guys. We need, the way I see it over here, as five months residence, like, I mean, seven months resident here, we need one of the line, 45 bus, because it's very hard for us, and special, I'm gonna be soon 65 years old, and I'm not that well, and I'm not that healthy in my legs now. It's because I was a soccer player a long time ago, and now I see the damage I have on my legs. If it's possible, this 45 bus, because it starts from Miller Road, I mean, by the White Plains Road, because these buses, they come almost every single day. They take between shifts over here, they take breaks, and then they pass by us over here, and they never stop here.
So can I just interrupt you briefly? So right now, we are doing the public hearing regarding short-term rentals and Airbnb. So the comment that you'd like to make should wait till the end, when I say that it's open for any comment.
No problem.
Okay? Sorry.
Plus, I say everything.
So it's okay. It's okay. You do it again. Yeah, yeah. So if you can hang out with us for a little while longer.
This is for you. I'm not charging anybody.
Thank you. Sorry about that. If anybody has any feedback to give regarding short-term rentals or Airbnbs, RBOs, sometimes people don't know what the short-term rentals are. We know them better as Airbnbs. If anybody else has any feedback or input to give about that in person, is there anyone on Zoom? So there are some additional modifications we're looking at, we're looking at making. So I'm gonna ask for a motion to keep the public hearing open till next month.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So we will continue to have some more conversations about this topic at the next month's meeting. The next up is adoption of the minutes from the February 5th meeting. May I have a motion to approve the minutes? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? May I, so this brings us to the first opportunity to address the board on any agenda items. So if you have anything you'd like to address the board regarding any agenda items, you may come forward now. Is there anyone?
Hello, my name is Sam. I'm 72 Main Street, Tuckahoe. I just wanted to say, I think it's absolutely fabulous that Westchester County can help fund sewing and early literacy programs, and I'm all for it. I think it would help in the long run and long term, and I have always wanted to learn how to sew. Mom knows, but I don't. So I highly looking forward to it, and I hope it's adopted.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board on any agenda items? Is there anyone else that would like to address the board on any agenda items only? Anyone on Zoom? No? Okay, so then that will move us to the resolution that Samantha would like for us to, to pass. Resolution number one, authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with the county of Westchester to fund library sewing and early literacy programs. I believe we received twelve thousand dollars for that, John, right? Around twelve thousand dollars for that program. So may I have a motion to authorize me to execute that agreement?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And ladies, there's a dress I might want you to sew for me, so go get that. Nice. Resolution number two, authorizing the village administrator to execute a lease agreement with connection business systems for two copiers. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And may I have a motion authorizing the adoption of the Village of Tuckahoe Breach Notification Policy? If anyone is wondering what that means, this relates to alerting individuals to any potential identity theft. If it happens when they're using Village, if they're communicating with the Village. So may I have a motion to authorize the adoption of this policy?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, board. May I have a motion to authorize a display contract with Special FX Wizard, Inc. for the annual Tuckahoe Fireworks Show on July thirteenth? If you all recall, last year's display was pretty impressive, despite complaints that maybe it was a little bit too short. But we are, I'm asking for the village board to authorize having a contract with Special FX Wizard again.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, may I have a motion to authorize the closing of the following capital projects for police vehicles and court upgrades?
So moved.
Second, so moved, I love it. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, and we're going into budget season, so I know this place is gonna be packed out for the budget sessions, Camille. It's gonna be packed out, it's gonna be standing room only. I'm authorizing setting, asking for a motion to authorize the setting of a public hearing to consider the tentative budget for the fiscal year June first through May thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five, for April eighth, twenty-twenty-four. May I have a motion to set a public hearing?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, and we also need to set a public hearing to consider a cable franchise agreement with Verizon Communications for April eighth as well. David, could you talk a little bit about that?
So we have two distinct cable companies in the Village of Tuckahoe, Verizon and Cable Vision. The cable franchise agreement basically allows these cable companies to use our right-of-way in the village. For them to allow, for us to allow to use the right-of-way, they usually offer us a PEG agreement, which is Public Access Channel. So they'll pay for some of the upgrades that we desperately need in this. And they also pay us kind of a, on your cable bill, you see kind of a monthly fee that gets remitted to the village as well. So for those payments, we allow them to basically use our right-of-way.
So thank you to the board for authorizing that. We're gonna set a public hearing on, on April eighth. And, say that again? Yes. Resolution number eight is all, we did that before? No? Okay, sorry. May I have a motion authorizing the setting of a public hearing to consider the cable franchise agreement? Sorry, trustee Lang threw me off, blame him.
I apologize.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, may I have a motion authorizing various change orders related to the Tuckahoe Library renovation project in the amount of forty-five thousand, six-hundred-and-fifty-three? David, could you talk a little bit about what those changes are? I, did I get the wrong? We didn't, we didn't, we didn't outline them, right? Because I just used my own, okay, got it.
So this actually number constitutes five different change orders from this project. So as you know, with any construction project, the base bid was one-point-one million dollars. Once you rip open a very old building, there's a lot of different things down there that we did not anticipate, including mold and some wiring upgrades. A portion of this, practically sixteen thousand of this number, we did anticipate. We got a grant after the actual bid went out, so we knew that was gonna happen. And then there's some other modifications where we actually found a sewer in, you know, that we actually have to have access to. So we have to do some modifications, but actually, I think in the end, it's gonna be better for the library. But these are kind of just normal, you know, construction project hiccups. These are, just to, you know, kind of give everyone a kind of heads up, we do have a construction manager on the project who is well worth every penny that we're paying them, who are down there every morning to kind of go over this, and they go over these change orders, and they go over the time for these change orders and ensure that these are kind of are on track to where they need to be, so.
And I'd just like to thank the director Swadish for having me introduce the project manager and giving me a little tour and letting me know what some of those changes were. It's gonna be very exciting when it's finished. So may I have a motion to authorize these change orders related to the renovation project at the library?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And last but not least, actually, there's another one that's not on the agenda, but I'd like a motion to authorize the approval of vouchers in the amount of five-hundred-sixty-two thousand, eight-hundred-and-twenty dollars and seventy-six cents.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And so I'd like to propose a resolution calling for an increase in AIM funding. AIM is the Aid and Incentives for Municipalities Program. And we have not received AIM funding in more than fifteen years. And I'd like to join NICOM, the New York Conference of Mayors and Municipal Officers, in requesting that this AIM funding be, you know, resumed and sent into the municipalities. So I'm gonna read the resolution, so bear with me for a moment, because we wanna pass this resolution, if the board so chooses, and then send it out to our governor, our senator, our assembly person, or, or the New York Conference of Mayors in support of the AIM funding to be put out into the municipalities. So the resolution reads, whereas the Aid and Incentives for Municipalities Program plays a critical role in funding essential municipal services for cities and villages across New York State, and Tuckahoe officials share the same priorities as our state leaders to make New York safer and more affordable, and New York's local governments, who are on the front lines of controlling property tax affordability and ensuring public safety, are integral to achieving those goals. And the state has not increased AIM funding in fifteen years. And according to the Bureau of Labor Statistics, inflation has increased by nearly forty-five percent during that same period. And the lack of funding from the state has led to rising municipal tax burdens and harmful disinvestment in essential municipal services and staff. And the property tax cap further limits the ability of local governments to properly fund the services that their residents need. And the challenges of rising inflation, the increasing costs of labor and supplies, as we're seeing with a lot of our projects, and the end of extraordinary federal aid, which we received, only accentuate the need for an increase in AIM funding. And the governor's twenty-twenty-four to twenty-twenty-five executive budget proposes to keep AIM funding flat. An increase in AIM funding would reduce the local tax burden and help revitalize communities across New York. And now therefore, it be resolved that the Tuckahoe Board of Trustees urges Governor Hokel to work with the leaders of the Senate and Assembly to increase AIM funding in the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year budget. May I have a motion to pass this resolution, please?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So we will join NICOM, and, and we do have a lot of legislators who are in, in favor of this and who are supporting the increase in AIM funding. And I know our village administrator has been looking for this to happen for many, many years. So thank you, board, for the support of the resolution for increase in AIM funding. And we will send this out to the governor and our legislators to help push for the funding that Tuckahoe deserves. Thank you all. So this will take us to departmental reports to the board, and chief? Chief of Police Larry Rota.
Good evening, and Village Board.
Good evening.
March twenty-first at nine AM, we'll have the dag graduation at Cottle School. Officer Piasta has been working diligently with the children in fifth grade there, and we're excited to be part of the graduation. It's a special day in Cottle that day. Open gym is in the community center from two to four. We seem to be getting some really good traction. A lot of children came last Wednesday and the Wednesday before. So we will have an officer on scene there as well, not in uniform, in gym attire, and interact with the youths of the community there. So it's a, it's catching trend. And then once the weather changes, we're gonna move outside and try to extend those hours. Four is just not working for us, we need a little more time. Coming weeks, we'll have warm weather, which means we'll be out in enforcement for pedestrian safety. It's key to a safe village enforcing vehicle and traffic laws. Again, the pedestrian crosswalks will be our hotspot and priority. Also, speed within the village. This past month, the traffic unit was out and about. On several days, they wrote thirty-eight summonses to commercial vehicles. Again, these commercial vehicles come through Tuckahoe, we are a truck route. So sometimes they can cause havoc. They come in overweight, they come in loud, they come in with safety violations, unlicensed drivers. So when we go out there, we really make a point to make sure that Tuckahoe is known that you better come through with the right trucks, the right drivers, and everything needs to be safe, so our residents are protected. Crime prevention tip of the month. Here we go. So, okay, so it's tax season, everybody. Tax season means refunds. Unfortunately, now with electronic filing, that seems to be the norm. That gives the criminals potential for fraud. So we're seeing identities get stolen, and then they take your identity and file your tax return on your behalf to receive your refund. While filing for your tax return, an electronic bank account is submitted fictitiously, and then they receive your tax return. So usually, the first thing, the first sign for the victim in this case would be when you try to file your own tax return, the real one, it gets bounced back. You'll never get a call from the IRS, that's one thing I wanted to reiterate tonight. The IRS will not call you. They will not ever call you. It's only strictly through mail. So if you are a victim of this, when you do look for your refund and to file your taxes, the first thing you're gonna do is come to the Tuckahoe Police Department. We're gonna assist you with filling out the correct paperwork and the fraud report, and you're gonna take that and then attach it to a report to the IRS with a special form. The process takes some time, however, we do see positive outcomes with this, and you do get the money back, your, your well-deserved money back. It just takes a little bit of time in coordination with the IRS. But again, to come into the PD to make that report is key, and we'll do it right away for you. Other than that, I wanna wish a happy spring to everybody. Coming up, the weather's gonna be great. Hopefully, snow season's done. Starting next month, we're gonna start flipping signs and getting into spring. So we'll be out there, our officers will be out there, stopping to say hello, greeting the public, and we'll be out and about.
Nice. Thank you, chief. Our DPW superintendent is not here, so that'll take us to the library director, Swadish Pashnanda. Hello, Swadish.
Good evening, mayor, the trustees and our Tuckahoe community. As police chief said, the spring is here, and we have libraries always full of different kind of programs. St. Patrick Day is coming, so for children's room tomorrow, we have at four PM, St. Patrick Cupcake Decorating, which is always full house. So the kids, they love that program, and we have art class with Mike Teeter, Wednesday, March thirteenth, at four forty-five, Legos, Ukuleles. We also have a class on Monday, March eighteenth, but also people can borrow Ukuleles also. And we have Graphic Novel Book Club, Pre-Yoga, Donny Do. We also started some programs on Saturday. Saturday, library opens twelve to four, and we are bringing different programs. Last Saturday, we had CPR class, and previously, Ms. Elaine did the storytime. And this coming Saturday, we have Donny Do, which does the puppets, fun, and music program. And two special programs coming up, STEM Ever After with the STEM Alliance, which is going to be on Monday, March twenty-fifth, at four PM, ages four to seven. And the second one is going to be Wednesday, March twenty-seventh, for ages eight to eleven. And there's a special story, Holy Storytime, which Ms. Elaine and I'm doing, which it's a festival of color, it's called Holi, and we will do a special program for children. It's Indian Festival of Color. And wonderful craft programs are coming for teens. We have Beaded Flower Pendant and Dungeon and Dragon Program, and Letter in a Bottle Necklace. So these have different dates and timing, please check it online. And special programs, we have one, it's coming tomorrow at six PM, Danger of Pesticides, which all of us, you know, know, or garden, or whatever we buy. So this is an excellent program. If you have time, please sign up for that program. And on Tuesday, March twenty-sixth, at seven PM, we have Eclipse That Enlightened America, as the solar eclipse is coming up on April eighth. And author talks in our regular program, Cheer Yoga and Tai Chi, Senior Strength Training, Majung, and art classes, memoir writing, and ESL classes are very popular. They are full, like, to the capacity, second session. So we offer now two session, which is every Wednesday. I should not say every Wednesday, because the teacher is away. This coming Wednesday, so it's beginners is ten thirty AM, and the second advance is at eleven forty-five. And there are a lot of other programs, so you're welcome to come, and if any question, give us a call.
Thank you. Do you have anything, Camille? John? David?
Sure, I think, as Swadish was talking, I think it's a, it's a good reminder that the library is in the community center. Being down actually at the construction site and having people walk around the fence into the building, asking where the library is was a little bit of a shock, but it's happened more than once, and there's big signs down there. So it's in the community center, the library, and they're doing a great job with their temporary location, so. Real quick, as the mayor's talking about AIM funding, I'm a little bit of a cynic, but I hope that we do get AIM funding. But as the state is going through the budget process, we're gonna start our budget process. We've started our budget process, the treasurer, John, myself, going through a lot of different analysis of the budget lines right now. So just as everyone knows, that the public hearing was scheduled for April eighth, but the tentative is due into the clerk's office on March twentieth. So if anyone's really looking forward to that, after March twentieth, the tentative budget will be out there. Just three congratulations tonight. I wanna say congratulations to Christopher Bosley, looking forward to working with him. Joe Marzella, promotion in the Department of Public Works, well deserved, congratulations to Joe. And then Nico, he was actually here tonight, kind of, yeah, he was, he was in the back, real quick. That's okay, though. Just wanna say, welcome aboard to Nico. He's been a seasonal with us, off and on for over a year now, is doing a great job in that department down there. Has done probably work that a seasonal probably shouldn't do, but I shouldn't say that. But he has really kind of just done what he exactly has to do down there, and he's gonna be a great addition to that team. So welcome, everyone.
Thanks. Yeah, sorry, Nico. Next meeting, come back next meeting. Gary? Okay. So that will take us to what's not so miscellaneous. It says miscellaneous, we should change that, like, to additional business or something. March twenty-third at nine AM, the village board budget work session will begin in Village Hall. All are welcome to attend, so that you can hear and see what the village process is. We had someone show up one day, and she says, I don't think I wanna see how the sausage is made, and never came back. So, but true, everyone is welcome. April eighth at seven PM, we will have our village board meeting. And as you heard, we do have a few public hearings on that day, so please do come. And on April seventeenth, we'll have at six PM, another village board budget work session. And then on April twenty-ninth at seven PM, we'll have a special budget adoption meeting right here at seven PM in Village Hall. So you have some, some dates coming up. We have a very busy April, and budget season is always very busy. So we encourage you to take part. I say this every year that I've been here, take part in your, your government, give feedback, give suggestions. Give feedback, give suggestions. Come and take part. You cannot complain if you're not giving your input into how you would like to see your village run. Okay, so we look forward to seeing you guys soon. And this brings us to the Board of Trustee Member Reports, starting with Trustee Lang.
Thank you, Mayor. First and foremost, our condolences go out to the Celestino family. Jim was a lifelong resident of Tukahoe, who recently passed, and our prayers go out to Jim's family. God bless him. Second, I'd like to congratulate all the appointments, just like David mentioned, as well as to Troop 2642. What a wonderful presentation. I'd like to thank all the residents that came out for yesterday's St. Patrick's Day Parade. Very windy, rainy, but also a lot of fun, so we appreciate everybody that made that effort. Thank you very much. The banners have been returned to the DPW. They're in now Frank's possession, and he told me that they will be going up as soon as possible, so that was great news. Thank you to Frank and DPW. I recently met with members of Beautification. They are experiencing a bit of a shortfall with the cost of, you know, everything going up. So they're exploring new fundraising ideas, so keep a lookout. It's nice to support the village. It always looks so beautiful. So thank you to Beautification for all they do. And lastly, I met with John Galuzzi, and he reminded me of our Easter egg hunt, and that'll be held Saturday, May 30th at 11:00 AM. Whole bunch of fun. A bunch of people show up, and it's always a great event. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Trustee Gachion?
Thank you, Mayor. We will start with our History Committee. Thank you again, Nick, for coming in. The online digitization process continues. Nick, Carmine, Ms. Elaine, Christina, Lois, the whole gang. I'm sure I'm leaving somebody out, but that work continues, and it's really neat what they're doing with it. And it's going to be a great project once the website is up and going. Their Facebook reached this month, 1,083 in total. There were six posts regarding Black History Month, featuring Chief Henry Norman, Joe Yancey, Dr. Warren Walters, and musician Jimmy Hill. And those had reached 1,083 people. The, this Saturday, and I see Sal in the audience, so I think he's going to come up and say something about this, so I'll touch on it quickly. This Saturday, March 16th, is, will be Samuel Crawford Day. It'll be on the south lawn of the Immaculate Conception Church at the corner of Winter Hill Road and White Plains Road at, come on, Josh, 11:00. Yes, but Sal will give you the details, I'm sure, when he comes up. But as always, the History Committee meets on Wednesdays here at Village Hall from 9:30 to 12:00. We'll move on to the Historic Preservation Commission. Last month, they voted to reject the hardship application for 230 White Plains Road. The meeting is online. You can find it on the village website. And there is no meeting scheduled yet, but I think it's going to be towards the beginning of April. April 1 is confirmed. There we go. Thank you. April 1st. And let's move on to veterans. The, it's going to be veteran season here. You're going to get sick of these reports because we have a lot of stuff coming up for our veterans here now through Memorial Day and beyond. The Memorial Day Parade, mark your calendars, is May 19th, May 19th at 3:00 PM. And the Memorial Day Tribute at East Chester High School Auditorium is May 16th, May 16th at 7:00 PM. It is the 80th anniversary of the D-Day Invasion, so we'll be talking about that. It is also the 20th anniversary of the Battle of Fallujah in Iraq. So those of us who are in Fallujah, we'll have a few words to kind of talk about that on that day as well. Veterans applications for the banner program are rolling in, but tick-tock, tick-tock. The time is coming to an end. We will receive applications up until April 1st for new banners. I've only heard from a few veterans. It's good. I hadn't heard that the banners were here in Tukahoe. I thought they were up in East Chester. I didn't know that they were taken down. But that's good. So if anybody from Tukahoe who had their banner in East Chester wants their banner up here in Tukahoe, contact us. Let us know where you want it, or if you want it back. Completely up to you. We look forward to getting them up. But April 1 is the cutoff date for new banners, and then we'll have to wait until next year. Lastly, March 27th is the VA Event at the Community Center from 10:00 to 3:00. There'll be claims agents, community resources. Former trustee Darrell Taylor, who's in the audience, is helping me out with getting some community resources, job opportunities, so it'll be a really nice event. We're still looking for folks to help sponsor lunch, so if you care about our veterans, you can come and sponsor lunch that day. But reach out to me if you want a table, if you want to come, if you have any questions, please feel free. Trustee Lang had mentioned Jim Celestino. He was a member of our VFW Post, so where thoughts and prayers go out to his family. He was a great member of our Post. We also, in our thoughts, think of Mike Fixx from American Legion Post 979, who has been going through some complications. And lastly, our friend Tony Nuno, also from Post 979, who have been going through some complications. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, trustee. Trustee Engelbert?
This is going to be the shortest one ever, I promise. Okay, so East Chester.
They don't want you to be short. They want you to be long.
I've got two showings a day, and then twice on Sunday. I'm joking. All right, so East Chester Union Free School District, March 19th, 7:30. East Chester High School Library is the next board meeting. Education is like the heart of a healthy democracy, so please be participating kind of in the East Chester if you are a resident or zoned for the East Chester schools. The second bit for East Chester is Friday, March 15th at 7:00 PM. Tickets are only $5. So five fingers, $5. There will be a Rock Against Cancer fundraiser to benefit Memorial Sloan Kettering. Go to the website and get more information about this. It's a really groovy video that the students put together, I believe, with a little bit of production help from Memorial Sloan Kettering, but it's awesome and cool and edgy in a fun, fun way. Echoing the chief's words about the days getting kind of warmer and longer, I encourage everyone to keep a closer lookout for all those students, and I hope there are more students walking to and from school, kind of in our mile-square-town-village. Folks should be able to walk to school. And we have a 25-mile-per-hour speed limit in the village for many reasons, and many of those reasons are walking to and from school. So keep it slow and keep the eyes open, kind of as we head into the spring. Okay, Tukahoe Public Library. The first question I have, and this is a more kind of off-the-cuff in this report, is when are we going to get a ukulele concert at a monthly board meeting? I'd like to pass a resolution that we have a ukulele concert at the board. I hear about the ukuleles. Where are the ukuleles? Let's see them here in Village Hall. The second bit, more seriously, though I'm not serious about the first point, is Medici.TV is a classical music programming service that's now available through the library. If you have a library card, hint, hint, hint. And you know what? It's good for your brain. It's good for your soul to listen to a bit of classical music. Please avail yourself of the services of the library. This couldn't have been set up better by Swadish, but I called out, I wanted to call out Mike Titor in my report today. I saw that there was an in-person class this Wednesday at 4:45 for students aged 6 to 10. But Mike has a special place in my heart. I do remember very closely or warmly during the pandemic, all of his online art classes that helped save my sanity as my son was home doing remote schooling. And that was one of the few online events that he actually looked forward to. So thank you, Mike, for your ongoing commitment to the children of the village. Renovations continue, kind of on pace, such an exciting time. Don't be, if you're fussed about that change order, that is a single-digit percentage of the budget kind of of the renovation, and that kind of change order percentage is kind of well within kind of best practice. I'm actually feeling good about the size of the change orders kind of so far. But I wanted to give kind of big hugs out to the library staff. This kind of change is exciting, but change is hard, and we have a team operating on, you know, folding tables in the community center. So thank you for kind of rolling kind of with it, but I suppose that's just Tukahoe's style to kind of roll with the changes. And then lastly, Tukahoe Environmental Sustainability Committee. We actually don't have any updates kind of for this month, so that's what's keeping me short this month. So I'm done.
Thank you, trustee Engelbert. And Deputy Mayor Cronin?
Good evening, everybody. I hope everybody is well. The Comprehensive Plan Committee has met and have been in the process of interviewing several different companies to act as consultants on the Comprehensive Plan. For those of you who are not familiar with the Comprehensive Plan, this is kind of like our plan moving forward for the rest, for the next 10, five to 10 years. So this is a plan that will help us think about development. It will help us think about sustainability. It will help us think about business and growth. And really, it is about what the people of the village want. So stay tuned. There will be opportunities for village and members, residents, people who do business here to have input and say in what goes into the Comprehensive Plan. So we will be calling on you, and we hope that you accept that call and come and give your opinions and your thoughts so that this becomes like the people's Comprehensive Plan. For the Zoning Board of Appeals, they have a few things on their agenda for this month. 20 Marble, and I believe that the meeting is on Wednesday, the 13th. 20 Marble Dale Road is a special permit to expand a business. 25 Main Street has put in an application to reduce the number of required parking spots. And 126 Bella Vista has an application to expand their driveway. And the Planning Board is, meeting is canceled or adjourned for this month. From the seniors, the seniors are having their St. Patrick's Day dinner luncheon at Fogarty's on Wednesday. And they have a Black History Month program on next Tuesday, the 19th. I had the pleasure of attending the Irish-American Social Club's Gala last Saturday, where Grand Marshal John Fixx from Cornell True Value was honored as the Grand Marshal, and village residents Patty and Billy George were the special honorees. So congratulations to all of them. Again, I would like to extend our condolences to the Celestino family. And I believe that is all I have. Thank you.
So first and foremost, I'd like to also offer my condolences to the Celestino family for their loss. I'd also like to acknowledge the observance of Ramadan in the Muslim community when they, this is the holiday where they fast, pray, and they take part in philanthropic activities to give back to their community. It's a very holy month for them. So I want to acknowledge the observance of their holiday. Also, Women's History Month, Women's and Girls' History Month. You've heard about all the fantastic things that girls in Tukahoe are doing, from winning, you know, records, world records, and winning first-time championships. We have an amazing community, and for such a small school, we have, you know, teams and coaches who are really doing some amazing work here. So I just want to reiterate that the girls' varsity cheerleading team are the New York State Champions. Do you guys know what a big deal this is? It's really, really awesome. And also, the Tukahoe Girls' Basketball Team won the New York State Regional Championships. The school is elated. I think they're having a meeting tonight, and that's why they couldn't be here, because they're there, the New York State Girl Cheerleading Championship. The champions are there at the school. But I also want to acknowledge the Tukahoe Science Team. They placed ninth overall and brought home a trophy. And if you know anything about that, that's no small feat for such a small school. So we are just, you know, we have some amazing schools, some amazing teachers, coaches in our community. So I just want to acknowledge that and say congratulations to everyone. You saw our Troop 2462. I always mix up their number. They're also just doing some amazing work, and, you know, the troops, the Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts are just building leaders and confident adults. So I'm really excited about the work that we're doing here in Tukahoe, so congratulations to all. I have some good news. The bus stop that used to be at Depot Square has officially and permanently been moved to Lake Avenue across the street from Angelina's. So for those who have been complaining about the buses at Depot Square, the county has officially moved them over to where Angelina's is. So congratulations to everyone who's been fighting for this for some time. Our Marble Award, we talked about the Marble Award. The Chief Costanzo was the first recipient of the award. We now have a criteria that has been established. You will see that soon, maybe this week, up on the Tukahoe website. Thank you to John Sullivan, who helped us formulate the criteria for the Marble Award. And we'll soon be letting you know when the deadline will be to nominate someone. We've talked, we've heard about all the wonderful people in Tukahoe, and so there might be somebody that you think would be worthy of receiving the Marble Award. So I would ask that you consider that. So look for that within the next week or two up on the website. I'd like to address a couple of things. There were, I got a couple of calls about migrants being at the hotel again. You heard me talk about this a few months back, that I've gotten a few emails and phone calls, people up in arms that there are migrants at the hotel. I have been in touch with the hotel manager, who invites anyone to come and visit. The rumors are not true, and I was told that the rumors came from a board member on the board. So I want to let the village know that this board is not spreading rumors. And so I'd like to ask each board member here to confirm that you are, we are not the ones that are spreading the rumors that migrants are at the hotel. So I can tell you personally that I am not, and I'm asking every board member to do the same thing so that the board does not lose confidence in the village board, which is very important that you maintain confidence in us and our integrity. So can I ask each board member to personally make note that, and to let the community know, that you are not the one that's letting people know falsely that there are migrants at the hotel?
I can confirm that I am not spreading any rumors that there are migrants at the hotel.
Same here. I can absolutely confirm that I have nothing to do with spreading any rumors in regards to migrants at the hotel.
I can confirm that I am not spreading rumors about migrants at the hotel on Marble Dale Road.
Same. I did not spread any rumors about migrants at the hotel.
Thank you. So there you have it, Tukahoe. This board is not the one that is going out and spreading those lies. If you have any doubt or any questions, you are welcome to go to the hotel. The manager, I've spoken to him. He said, "You're welcome to come there and visit and see what's actually happening." Okay, so hopefully, those rumors are put to rest, and we don't continue the divisive rhetoric in the community, whomever it is. Also, I received a couple of text messages and emails from residents asking where their loved ones' banners were. So trustee Lang just informed us that the banners were taken down from East Chester and brought to DPW. Wanted to say Depot Square. You know, I just asked that this board try to work as cohesive as possible. We don't have to, as, you know, someone said, Oprah Winfrey says, "We don't have to go out and have tea and sweet potato pie together, but we do have to work together, and we should work as cohesively as possible." So I have assigned trustee Gachion to lead the effort with the banners. And I got angry messages from residents yelling at me about where their banners were because they didn't know that they were taken down. And, you know, there's a saying in the Baptist church, "We should do things in decency and in order." So if we're taking banners down, we should inform the families. The banners are coming down. They're going to go here, and this is what's going to happen next. So I'm not sure how this all came about, but I'm just letting the residents know. I'm hoping that people are watching this and know that your loved one's banner is at DPW now. If you'd like for your banner to be re-hung in Tukahoe, which trustee Gachion will be coordinating, to please contact him on the village website. You can get his email address and send a message with the subject heading that says Veterans Banner Program. If you would like the banner back for your family to have, you can also contact him there and let him know. And as he's working to coordinate getting the banners up with the village administrator and DPW superintendent, just be patient. This will be happening closer to Veterans Day, not now. I'm sorry, Memorial Day, not Veterans Day. It'll be from Memorial Day to Veterans Day. Okay, so we want to honor our veterans by making sure that we're doing things in order. Okay, so we want to honor our veterans by making sure that we're doing things in order in a way that truly does honor them.
Mayor, if I may?
Let me finish my report, please, and I have some good news. We, I talked to you guys about being awarded a grant from the congressman's office for a million dollars. I received a call this week saying that it finally passed Congress and the Senate, and it was signed by the president. So I just want to thank Congressman Bowman and the president for a million-dollar grant that will be used for a project at Depot Square. We have been talking about this project for a long time, we have beautiful renderings, and now it's just a matter of figuring out what we can afford. So because, you know, we're talking about the traffic lights at Columbus and Main Street, and the traffic light alone is $700,000. So we will be talking about how we use that money, what are the priorities, and seeing what more money we can get to try to do all of the things that we'd like. Yes, so trustee Lang, you may.
Yes, thank you. So I'm sorry if I took in the liberty to assume that the residents wanted their banners back. Their families paid for these banners, so I think it was safe to assume that they wanted them back. Any particular family that doesn't want it back, you can give me a call, my number's 914-261, and I will personally bring the banner back. But I'm sorry, I did assume that everyone that paid for their banners would like them up, and they're going to be going back up in the same place that they were, that's what I was told. So that's just where I am with the banners, thank you, Mayor.
So trustee Lang, I'm just asking that you allow trustee Gachion to coordinate this. So.
Of course, of course, by all means. I was just concerned about getting it back to the village, that's all. No one was told that they were coming down.
So like I said, families weren't informed, so they went up, they went to wherever their banner was in East Chester, they didn't see it there, they called me angry, as if I took them down personally. And so that's why it's important that we do things in an orderly way, because then it creates confusion, and when it creates confusion, people get anxious and antsy. So at this point, I'm not asked, and please do not ask anyone to contact you, they should be contacting trustee Gachion, because he is the one that's coordinating this, and when there are too many hands in the pot, you know what the saying is.
Well, that's fair, I just thought that because they weren't notified that they were coming down, they probably need not be notified they're going back up.
Okay. All right, so that is it for my report, and this takes us to the last final opportunity to address the board on any agenda or non-agenda items. If there's anyone, sir, you may come up now. Yes. The bus, the bus, the bus. I love it. Sorry about that, I know the order of the program is.
It's okay, it's okay, it's my error. The thing is, I thought maybe, because I didn't know, you know, for Tuckahoe, I know very little, it's a very small.
No, I understand.
You have to be careful.
It's no problem.
Just I'm trying to say, the way I see it, things, maybe five years from now, we're going to be not that good forever, because it's my my mind, what I see, because I walk every day, something is, let's leave it that. Let's look for the bus, I spoke to Mr. Danny another night, repeat, that this 45 buses, I'm trying to say, it's very hard, I have right here in my, you know, from the doctor, they told me to go to do the therapy for back, neck, and upper head. The problem is, I cannot do it because I cannot walk. These 45 buses, you guys, you can, you know, just I'm trying to contact the right people there, I spoke to two of them. And then they said, like I, they say to me, they say, how come you are like five, six months there, and you you come out with this next? I come, as soon as I came here, maybe in two, three weeks, I take the picture from this bus, I was following, I said, where is this bus, why is it not stopping here? And after that, I find out everything, will be good, if you can do something, please. The problem is not for myself, for entire, because we are mostly, 100 Columbus, we are mostly disabled people there. One stop will share the problem, I mean, solve the problem. This is it. Another thing is, just I'm trying to say, I have to go, for example, almost every single day or other day to go to pharmacy in Bronsville. We don't have one pharmacy here. Another thing is, was a Chase Bank a long time ago here by the center? It's nothing there. We don't have supermarket here. We have to go up, or we have to go, I go to Scarsdale's today. That means the one place there is empty store, it's empty even, I looked at last night, late, I said, will be very good for a small supermarket there. And like I said, banks, no. Three things very important, we don't have it. The main thing, the way I see it, I say, will be good for this 45 bus. One stop will resolve everything. That's it, this is just, nice to meet everybody.
Thank you.
For the best, wherever I can, myself, I worked like 10 years volunteer in 49 places, district there, in the Bronx, I will, just I try to do it here, wherever I can, I'm going to do anything to keep this place safe and clean.
Welcome.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Deputy Mayor, you'd like to say something?
Sir, just in response to your your comments, I would like to give you some information, and if you wouldn't mind leaving your phone number for me, I, there is paratransit. Paratransit will bring you anywhere within three-quarters of a mile of your regular bus service, so it will, it might pick you up at 100 Columbus and bring you to the destination that you want to go on that 45 bus. We don't have control over, obviously, the county bus lines, and so that would be a harder thing, but we can tell you about services that are provided for elderly and disabled citizens that would be helpful for you. There is also, the town of East Chester provides service, cab, very discounted cab service, and so there are some programs that I'd like to talk to you about, if you wouldn't mind leaving your phone number with with the clerk, I'll call you and let you know about those. Okay. Oh, oh, thank you, yeah, I forgot to say that, yes, we also do have a pharmacy on Fisher Avenue. Yes, yes, so it's right, it's within walking distance to 100 Columbus.
I'm going to ask you to come forward, I'm going to give you this, please put your your number here, and please give it to our clerk, Camille, give her your phone number and your name. Just write it down, right there. You can do it right here, right there, yeah. Would anyone else like to address the board on any agenda or non-agenda items?
Hello, everybody, Sal Provenzano, 11 River Street. A few things. First of all, I want to thank the folks that helped us out during the parade yesterday. It was, when I talked to General Washington, he said it reminded him of crossing the Delaware, that's how cold it was. But we got through it, you know, the Friends of the Ward House and the East Chester Historical Committee, it was, it was great, so. And Nick Senzana was soaked to the bone as well, so.
So was I.
Yeah, it was crazy. But it was fun, and it was a lot of, a lot of happy people. Second thing, trustee Gachion had talked about, this Saturday is the is Captain Samuel Crawford Day. This is the third year in a row that we've worked in conjunction with the Veterans of Foreign Wars and the Friends of the Ward House to really commemorate the acts, the acts of heroism that happened right at that spot, right across from the Ward House. I'll just read to you what I sent to News 12 that kind of just encapsulates to us what really we believe is, makes this so important for the whole community. This event has significance for Westchester, New York State, and the nation as a whole as we approach the 250th anniversary of the Declaration of Independence to be celebrated in 2026, only two short years away. Approximately 20 combatants lost their lives, patriots, loyalists, and Hessians. Captain Crawford was mortally wounded by bayonet and dumped somewhere between East Chester and the prison ships anchored in New York Harbor. VFW is partnering with us, and two veterans, one being right here, are going to be laying the wreath, and General George Washington will also be making remarks, assisting in the ceremony. So all I ask is, anyone that can, that has the time on on Saturday at 11:00 a.m. on that south lawn of the Immaculate Conception. We did ask News 12 to come, and this is something we're going to be taping as well, we're going to have it, you know, video, but there's nothing like being there, so I ask that whoever can be there, please be there, especially the students, would be great. Another thing I'd like to mention is that Jim Celestino, who passed away, he was a member of our KEO Council Knights of Columbus, very active member, very active member with the Immaculate Conception and Assumption Church. We're going to miss him very much, he was just a great guy. Whoever knew him really loved him. And the last point, you recall, and I thank the board for their condolences, for my brother Tom, Father Tom Provenzano, he died back in July. Well, this Thursday, Silesian High School is having their president's dinner, and they are awarding Tom posthumously the Educator of the Year Award. So we're very pleased to hear that, and so now his his legacy, you know, goes on. Again, Tuckahoe resident, you know, he was ordained up at the Immaculate Conception Church, his first mass was at the Assumption, and now he's being recognized by Silesian High School. So again, just wanted to thank everyone for their condolences at the time, and.
Congratulations.
Hope to see you all on Saturday.
Thank you, thank you, Sal. Anyone else? Is there anyone on Zoom? No? Okay. So we will see you back here on April 8th at 7:00 p.m. for the Village Board meeting. If you'd like to join us for the Village Board Work Session, the Budget Work Session on March 23rd, we will be here at 9:00 a.m. And somebody will bring bagels, I'm not sure who yet, somebody will be. The youngest brings bagels, that's not me then, I'm good, I'm good. So have a good night, Tuckahoe, and we will see you soon.